...session, they're gonna start hitting the public safety sector because they know that's a way to get in. Law enforcement is notorious for clicking on any attachments because they have so many different people emailing witnesses and people emailing their complaints into those officers and that. So they've, the hackers have figured that is a way to get in and that they could eventually link back towards our financials. So the thing is to get in. And there's been others in the county that have hit, we just haven't been able to arrange So last thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm probably cutting myself off at the knees doing Last few months, I've had senior directors and department heads from other within the county saying that they're out of, you know, no place to store it and we're running out of storage. And that, so I respectfully request you guys to look at the Camden property one more time.
What is through or what?
So the, the northern warehouse that Hoosier Back is in.
That what?
Hoosier Back, that, that company, that warehouse and two acres, he has sold that to that government. He's in the midst of carving that out, I don't know if it's finalized yet, but it's being worked on right now. And he's keeping the, the tillable land there on the east side.
It makes just that big warehouse there.
Because the warehouse and office building. And he's willing to split those up, but you figure Bill thinking on, on the cost, if you're gonna build just a regular old pole bomb, a six thousand square foot pole bomb, just a concrete pad, and that is gonna cost you a hun- at twenty-five dollars a square, it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a six thousand square foot pole bomb. That steel structure building out there, you could put four and a half of those regular old pole bombs inside that facility.
You wouldn't have to put them in the corner.
You wouldn't have to put them in the corner.
If you have office buildings.
There's potential for using that office building because the county does not have a continuity of operations plan and that. So if I asked any of the department heads right now, that if we had a disaster here in Delphi and you couldn't get to your office, where would you work? Where would you conduct business for the county?
I would probably go to another county that has the same software.
Third software. Where would you go?
I think that would be our only option for the county.
Disaster. And that. So see, our plan, we don't even know where we're gonna go if we have an issue. And this is something I brought up sixteen months ago.
Did he say what he wanted for that two buildings?
The two buildings is five hundred, or fifty is what he's asking me, you know? I'm not telling you what to throw out of his office or anything. But that's all I have unless you have questions.
What?
One of the problems I see with that out there is that we'd almost take a grounds person just to maintain that area, so.
Well, if you guys want, I, I can work up a five, ten year improvement plan for that and it could include a lawn maintenance type thing, or you just leave it on. Whoever's out there, you figure it out. But yeah, I mean, there's gonna be some, that is a lot of places to move.
He's taking six acres off, so.
Six acres of what? Eight of the tillage. And then the two acres in the back end, so you're taking ten acres off.
So you've got two, two acres you sold off?
Now there'd be twelve to fourteen acres left. But that's including what the warehouse is set on, or the office building.
We'll give that much moment left because a lot of it's ground.
Yeah, there's still a good size for it.
Yeah, between the two.
Right.
Because if not, we're gonna spend almost a hundred thousand or better just for a done twenty quarter if we tear that down, drive it down and redo that there.
Yeah, I would.
You have that done by next meeting?
It's about five years. I think I have it done by now. I mean, there's a lot of different options you can do with it as well, you know, like you can throw those all out. You can throw nine-one-one over there. There's plenty of space to put a tower down the road, for example, that way we could get out of the Harley contract and R E M C, we're paying, it's almost what, thirty thousand now for the Harley a year? And then twenty-five hundred for our.
Do we know that a tower located on that Camden side, do the coverage if the one Harley does?
That's VHS today. And that, we just gotta get it at the right height and that, I'd have to, you know, use some stuff.
What are the elevations of the two sides are?
Camden's a little bit higher, you know, but it'd be a lot of pressure.
There's, there's used to be a tower right across from, between, well, the center, oh, tower. I'm sure we'll have it there. I guess I'll get their attention.
I've got it in five years, but different options for you guys.
Was there any interest in the property right now that we know?
There's talk. My last, my last conversation, why, since a couple of them are looking at it, but one is falling too.
One of them was a chicken farmer.
Yeah, the chicken farmer was sitting in the north.
Right, and they put chickens out there.
But that's within, that's falling too.
Too close to the other houses, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Linda. No, no, folks, sorry.
That's fine, good morning. We have a high, an employee at the highway department that has requested a thirty day leave of absence without pay, some surgery that you'd like to get resolved and take some care on. I could ask for your approval of that. He's a good employee and anything we can do to help him out would be appreciated.
Has he not been working for as long as I could get F N L A?
Yeah.
Well, we know we've had an employee go through all of his F N L As and we gave him once. Four weeks? Something like that.
I don't think it was a thirty days.
Yeah, it was thirty days. What about his insurance? Did he have to reapply for the insurance that he's done that long?
He did not, he'd like to have health insurance.
He doesn't think he has all the insurance.
He don't have her insurance, so I think it's easier. And you're backing Red Bull?
Yes.
Is he a driver?
Pardon?
He's CEO, I see.
Yes.
Motion to approve. We got a motion in a second to approve the leave of absence without pay for an employee for a period of thirty days. And we ask for a vote, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you. The only other I have for you is that, as you know, we did get our community crossings application in, so now it's just a matter of time, waiting to see what kind of money there is and what are we getting from it. I'm guessing somebody's probably in the middle of March, because the deadline is actually the sixth this week, and it normally takes around a month or so.
Do you have an idea how competitive this is as far as, how little the pot is and how many are replacing or anything like that?
Not yet.
Well, we certainly hope it goes through, appreciate all your work, but I know it's a big job.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions for Paul? Any potholes to fill or?
No, there's none out there at all.
We'll fill it with all that water we got.
Okay, we are ready to move on now, someone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to chat today about county health insurance. In the past two and a half years that I've been treasurer, I've heard a lot of rumblings about our health insurance. It's winter time and the treasurer's office is kinda slow. So I have spent some of my time doing some research and collecting some information. Some of it you may already know and some of it may be new, so if you allow me to summarize.
Sure.
The, the legal size document is just a comparison for some other counties in the city of Delphi and Flora. Cass and Clinton and White, I reached out to them and asked them about their plans. Interesting enough, Cass County has the same plan that Carroll County has, the GPA, ELAB cost plus program. They have had it for eight years. I spoke with their H R director, Jeremy Hall, last week or so, and he considers that program to be very successful in Cass County.
I noticed on here on your chart, it costs their employees much more than it does ours too, right? I mean, individual deductibles higher, family deductibles a thousand dollars higher, out-of-pocket's higher.
That's correct. Yes. But it, I, he didn't say how much money that it had saved them as the, as you know, the healthcare in Indiana, healthcare costs have just been on the rise. But they're not really that comparable because they're a much bigger county. But the savings, I think you can, you were here, Bill, I know, when this plan was entered into four or five years ago, I think the projected savings to Carroll County was around three hundred thousand dollars if we, if that plan was chosen as an option as opposed to traditional insurance. But just for those of you that don't know, the plan that we are on is somewhat of an unconventional type of insurance. It, it's pretty much the same as, as traditional health insurance goes, whereas there's a deductible, there's a family deductible, our, our individual deductible is two thousand, the family deductible is four thousand, the individual out-of-pocket limit is three thousand, which I think is, I was kinda surprised at that, that is considerably low for an out-of-pocket expense. And for families, out-of-pocket limit is six thousand. So that's all well and good, and I think pretty appealing to the employee. Where the issue I think lies is that this cost plus program where it has negotiated contracts with providers, most providers in the area, it does not have negotiated contracts with facilities. So if you say, go get a mammogram, or you have colonoscopy, or you have some sort of major surgery like knee replacement or heart surgery or something like that, or emergency room visits, you break a hand or break a knee, some of your family. The plan does not have contracts with those facilities like traditional insurance companies where they send you a bill for, say, two hundred thousand, and your insurance says, yeah, but we have a rate, you know, negotiated, whereas really only should be eighty thousand. And they write the rest of it off. And a lot of you have probably seen that in your explanation of benefits over the years. That doesn't happen with this, with this plan. They don't write it off. And they actually send you a letter right off the bat and say, just so you know, we don't have a contract. So, you know, we're gonna be sending you a bill, you're responsible for it. And they can get kind of, they can get kind of intimidated. And, but the cost plus plan, GPA, they have a, an entity, a group called ELAB, and they take what that's called a balance bill, and they basically take over for you in negotiating, working out, they basically mitigate a settlement. That takes time, months and months. There are some steps that the employee needs to go through to, they have to make sure they send the bills to ELAB. The employee is sent legal documentation from the attorneys at some point, where they have to read and sign, and basically they're giving them their power of attorney, and it issues a no contact rule to the employee from, from the provider. And it's, it's, it's just different. It's, it's kind of, I've been, I've been through it myself more than once, and I consider myself somewhat savvy in this area of insurance. And I followed all the steps, and I will tell you, it wasn't resolved. I passed one outstanding, yep, it hasn't been resolved, but I had, some were claims that were a couple of years ago, and they ended up getting resolved and they ended up writing them off or something. But I had to stay on top of it. And so there's a couple of things I wanna point out. Cass County, when I, when I spoke with their H R director, Jeremy Hall, he said that the program's been very successful and it has saved the county a lot of money. He said the key to success is in how it's administered. And he proceeded to tell me that he spends a good amount of time when employees come in and their new, their new orientation, explaining the benefits, how the health insurance works, what you can expect when this happens. And he also is there, has an open door policy, that if they have any problems with this, come in and, and ask him about it. When they do get the bills, he asks them to bring them to him, he sends them to ELAB. He basically spends a lot of his time counseling these people, making sure that they are on top of it and they're doing, you know, taking the steps to make sure that this all gets taken care of without affecting their credit before it goes to collection. And because from what ELAB says, you should not have to worry about going to a collection agency. I did have one go to a collection agency once. I'm still not sure how that happened, but it did get resolved. But, so I'm like, okay, if I feel like I'm on top of things and I had one go to a collection agency, what about men like, say, my husband, for example? When you say anything about health insurance or anything like that, he'll be like, no, I don't know anything about it, I don't wanna know, I don't understand it, why, why handle that? So, you know, it's for people who are, are people who don't work at a desk and don't wanna deal with this stuff. They're the ones who really need someone there, basically to kind of hold the hand, their hand and coach them through it. So I guess I'm not, I feel like when this decision was made to go with this plan, correctly with my, if I'm wrong, but I believe this was four or five years ago, and at that point we had a full-time H R person, I don't think they were called H R, I think they were called like, was it county coordinator maybe? And that's from what Bill, Sylvester from Apex told me, Vicki Snipes at the time, that was county coordinator, was who he worked with and who presented this plan. And the plan was that she would be there to administer the plan. So I feel like things just didn't kind of progress as they, as they, they were intended. That county coordinator position was eliminated, but they, the county went ahead with the plan. There was no person in that full-time role to help, you know, with that transition and to help the employees deal with the change and understand the non-traditional plan. And so although I don't doubt that the county has saved money, I think it's kind of been at the expense of the employees. And that's, I think what, what you can do, what I'm asking you to do is, in July, when this contract is up for renewal, when you consider whether you stick with this non-conventional plan, that will save money, there's no doubt about it, consider what you can do to help the employees. So say you save three hundred thousand dollars, but take forty thousand dollars and invest in a full-time H R person who can administer it, it will be their, one of their main goals, one of their main duties to administer this, so the employees do not suffer. The smaller sheet that I gave you is just a summary of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation that each year has been used for, as a budget for health expenses. And I have, in the second column, I put the Mentonex plans, those are medical plans because we are self-insured for each year, the GPA premiums that come out of the seven hundred and fifty thousand, the Carroll County clinic, the expenses for the last three years, life insurance premiums that are provided for employees, that expense, some other small miscellaneous But what is not, and all of those expenses are charged to that, that line item for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation. But what is not, what I, what I also wanted you to see was, we get stock loss refunds from our plan where if there's a, I'm not sure what the criteria is, but when claims exceed a certain amount for a certain individual or maybe a group of individuals, it's kind of like the out-of-pocket limit, then GPA sends us refunds. So in two thousand seventeen, we received two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in refunds. That was not, that money doesn't go back into the same line item as the expense, so, so the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars really is offset by the stock loss refunds. We also get prescription rebates that don't go into that line item. So really the net.
Don't go into that line item, define that.
Well, there's a, there's a line item for, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a line item for health, healthcare. It covers the claims, the premiums for health and life, the Carroll County clinic, cost of the clinic, and some other miscellaneous. But the refunds that come back from GPA, when our claims exceed a certain dollar amount, those refunds aren't going back into the same account to offset it, they go into a different account, they go into a different line item. So.
Would you like to?
They go into their own, so you can track how much we have in it, so it's easier to track your stock loss refunds. They have their own. I don't know what happened at the beginning of two thousand seventeen, but after we started this, we changed it to, so we would know what we got back from prescriptions and our stock loss.
Then what happens to that money after you know it?
It's just in your, it's in the, I believe it's in the county general where it, it just stays.
It's, yeah, it's a line item in the general time.
Right.
But my point is.
It doesn't just stay there, it, it transfer, stays in county general for your use, there's county general, there's, has lots and lots of different line items that at the end of the year, it stays in county general. It's hard to explain too.
But the, the stock loss, stock loss refund, they're not budgeted, so it's not like it's money you're expecting to come in, but it is, it does offset that, that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you're, if you're budgeting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that expense and when you get two hundred and sixty back, plus the prescription rebates, so the net expense in seventeen was five hundred and seventy-three. So that creates, that was a surplus, nine hundred and seventy-six. Now, there was a question I had about the H S A's because I thought the H S A amounts were supposed to come out of this seven hundred and fifty thousand, but it doesn't look to me like they have, they can.
No, they don't come out of there.
So it did in sixteen and seventeen, but it's a different line item. So they're budgeted.
It's budgeted in the commissioner's budget.
So the, so the seven hundred and fifty is not appropriated, right, as I said, it's separate. So in, in two thousand nineteen, claims were actually really low, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And premiums were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, the clinic was sixty-five, which was down from the previous years.
We changed contracts, we had to.
But look at the surplus in two thousand nineteen, it's a pretty good sized number. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I think there's some room in your annual appropriation to make some changes to benefit the employees. And I would like for you to consider one of two options. Either spend more on your premiums to go to a traditional plan where we don't have the monkey business with the facilities. Or invest that money into an H R person who can navigate and be there to help the employees deal with the issues with the facilities. One other point I just, I, I almost forgot to mention was with Cass County, they actually have an advantage of over, over and above having a full-time H R person. They actually, on their own, negotiated a contract with Cass County Memorial Hospital, which is a facility that's in good use. So they, I mean, I'm sure there's other facilities that, not all of your employees use Cass County Memorial, I'm not sure what enforcement did. We have no contacts with any facilities. So every one of our employees who goes for an emergency room visit, visit because the trial falls and cuts themselves to meet stitches, mammograms, colonoscopies, any sort of procedure, we have no contacts. So everyone who has a bill from a facility has to go through this process.
But don't they give you the freedom to choose who you wanna go to? That would mind me.
Well, yes, you have the freedom, you're not, you're not, they're not under contract.
Right, but if you don't like going to Logan's Ford Hospital and you wanna go to the law pit, but we're in a contract, you'll have to go there to get that, if not, you still gotta go through the other process, right?
No, no, what, I think you're using networks. Most, most, when there is a network, they, when they negotiate networks, they usually negotiate networks.
But if we enter into a contract, it's almost like the network, correct?
If you, if you have contact, yes.
No.
But I'm saying there, there's no, they don't even, there are no contracts or no, none of the facilities are in network. None of the facilities, that's, that's the program, that's how the program works. It doesn't even attempt to, to negotiate brand contracts.
Neither?
I think, Steve, what, what she's meaning is they have a contract that they will write off so much of that.
Right.
When they go there, that you're not locked into having to go there, you can still go to someplace else, but they're not gonna write off anything because they're not.
The point that if you don't go to Logan's Ford Hospital, then you gotta go through this whole process, right?
Right, yes, exactly.
But even if you go to Logan's Ford, you have to go through the process?
For us?
For us.
Yeah.
If you're a Cass County employee, no, if you go to Logan's Ford, then you, you have a contract. But we have no contract to attend to. So the other thing I wanted to ask you is I, if we're ahead of the game, and I have prepared a survey, and it's just a draft, but I think that it would be helpful to you as commissioners who are sitting in these seats and having to make these decisions. Yes. Well, I may have a chance, but I'm, I'm here to change.
I want to call it.
Yes, you wanna pick one?
Yeah.
And I'm not asking you to sign it, I just want you to read it, and I would like to come back at your next meeting and, and get your feedback about any.
That's fair.
And if you support it, because I'd like to send this out to all employees or see that all employees get a copy of it. And so. And so you can arm yourselves with what our employees think and what their preferences are. So you'll have that information. What's a priority to them when you are presented with the options? Again, a couple of months from now.
We, we had a committee before we went back to this insurance from the department head and this is what they chose.
And again, a committee is a select few individuals who are going to give you their opinion. Um, if I were you, I would want to know how everyone feels, um, not just a select few people.
Well, we picked the committee just because it would be easier for us to deal with a few people rather than everybody.
But I, I would like to send this out with your endorsement and, um-
Well, I guarantee I'll read it through and, and-
And I'm coming back-
Bring it back to us and we'll have an answer on that.
And I can make any changes to it.
Okay.
Anything you'd like. So if there's anything else you'd be, you're curious about, you'd like to add to it, um, I could do that easily.
I, I would like to just go through a few points that you made there. Uh, yeah, when we, when we were faced with originally taking this type of plan, our insurance rates were just going skyrocket. It was going to be very prohibitive, I thought, for the employees to be able to afford the deductibles. How much was going to be, because they were, they were going up. Uh, so we were desperate looking for something that was affordable. Uh, at that same time, uh, the council came to us and asked us to hire somebody in this position that you were talking about as a, um, supposed to be as a, um,
Manager.
Manager liaison, all that for the, for the commissioners and, uh, an open office all the time representing commissioners and a human resource person. And, uh, we went through the process and the council member and myself and, um, I had two council members and myself, one of, one of the committee. We picked the person and within about two weeks, there was a squabble between one of the council members and that person. And they wound up firing the person, taking it out of the budget. The council did. They pulled it out. We didn't do that. So, uh, so the position that I thought was a, a good position, a good start and everything, came, was started, disappeared real quickly. Uh, we would have to, of course, go back to the council again and ask for that position that he made, uh, recreate. And I, I think that, uh, it's, I think it's a good idea. And I'm not saying, I don't think that we're doing a good idea, good, that the auditor's office and staff in there are not doing their job now. I'm just saying that somebody who was, like you say, there to hold the hand of these people and to make sure they understood their entire benefit package, since, since we don't, we're not eligible for it. We don't have this insurance. We're kind of outside of this. And I, I knew at the time that they, when we had that alleged crisis of finances, um, they took all the council members and the commissioners off of insurance. And you, as soon as that happened, there'd be a disconnect between us and our employees. If these people and us don't, aren't in the same bucket with the, with the employees, we're not understanding what all you're doing. We're not, I mean, you've explained a couple of things here to me today that kind of, uh, you know, from what I understood, we can kind of clarify a little bit as to how the, the process worked. Um, so I guess what we have to do is just we'll, we'll look through this, we'll consider it. Um, I personally see nothing wrong with pulling every employee and finding out what did they, what they think. Um, I want them all to come to me whenever they want to talk to me about it. So, um, I, I don't have a problem with this. You've certainly done a lot of work here. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm trying to stay busy.
Well, I have a, a question for you and for Beth here. So we have a surplus here on the city line, the last line there, two thousand nineteen. I included the benefit for you out here. So we have a surplus in two thousand nineteen of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now that arose because we put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the insurance program. And we're self-insured. So when the claims came in at only a hundred and sixty-seven thousand that we paid out of that, uh, that was a big benefit right there. But then we got returns of stop-loss policy of almost sixty thousand and, uh, prescription rebates of sixty-one thousand. So those together added up to two eighty-one, the way I'm looking at its charge here, which gave us a surplus, the four hundred and sixty-eight. Where is the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand now?
Well, that fifty-nine and sixty-one do not add up to two eighty-one.
Well, I think that includes the one thirty-seven, seventy-seven.
Yeah, that includes.
The fifty-nine, sixty-one.
Well, the surplus is still in your fund. I mean, um, there would be leftover amount. I, I didn't see this. I haven't gone over to really study. Um, but, um, I would think many would have more than just that cost.
It all rolls up into the thousand, the balance.
So that again, please.
And all the line items, what's left over rolls up into the fund balance of the year.
So, but it's all not in the same one item. Like the HSA, she has here, um, the surplus. I would have to look at them. Cause I think the clinic should be.
But there's no doubt we've saved an awful lot of money for this program. If we have this kind of money in excess, and of course we have no idea that our claims are going to be only a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty. In twenty-seventeen, it was five hundred and sixty-five, so.
Correct, basically. But then you also, if you have claims of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, then you're likely going to get considerable stop-loss refunds if someone has a catastrophic health or state. Um, so.
And that is what happened.
Right, yes, yes. So, um, um, another thing, maybe just touch on was the Carroll County clinic. And, um, I think I've heard you say before, Bill, that, um, you feel like that Carroll County clinic is really valued by a lot of our employees and they really support it. I don't hear that from the people I talk to. I gave the Carroll County clinic prescribed. I really did. I've been over there probably a few times because I'm like, okay, I want to jump on board. Go with it. Um, it doesn't work for me. I went over there three times. And he refused to, um, fill two of my prescriptions that I've been taking for years. So I had to go back to my previous physician to get those prescriptions filled. Now, that money that I spent that Carroll County paid in one of these bills was a waste. It was, it was just a waste. So, um, requiring someone to go there for an HSA, I think that's a waste. I think that if you're going to spend money to give someone an HSA, you can make some requirements on them so they qualify. Like, uh, bring me proof that you went to the dentist's or the eye doctor or you had a wellness exam. And I would recommend having a form that's filled out that they can take to the doctor's office and said, yes, Melinda Ross, I was here for a wellness exam, you know, January seventeenth, and the doctor signs it right there. Because if you ask them to send you something after the fact or they have to produce something, that tends to be problematic. Doctors' offices don't like to spend time doing those things. So if you have a form, just take it with you. Yep, I was here. Just like if you go to a conference, here you go. Yep, you were here. And require that as a requirement, that's at no cost to the, to the county. It's at no cost to the employee. You have proof that they're doing something to earn their HSA. But to bring someone here to do lab tests, some medical tests and somewhat of a short little physical cost money to the county, to require them to go to the clinic at least once or twice a year, you're going to get a bill for that too. Um, either give them the HSA money.
We don't require them to go over there anymore.
But at one, at one, at one first year you did. I'm just saying, these are the things that have been done. So if you're going to put a restriction or a qualification for people to earn HSA money, make it something that doesn't cost them county money. Um, but make it something that's fairly easy to obtain. So you're not just handing the money out to somebody who doesn't go to the doctor, who doesn't get their teeth cleaned, doesn't do anything and you're just giving them money. Fine, put a stipulation on them, pardon me, but make it something that doesn't cost the money, the county money in order to fulfill that requirement. Such as, in my paper, yes, I did this. I mean, right now we have two or three, you, you need to give proof of two or three, um, um, visits in order to qualify for this next HSA installment. Um, but I think Beth, you told me that I need to get, give something from my doctor that said, I was there for a wellness visit. I'm not sure what that is. I'm going to have to ask my doctor to print something that says this is a wellness visit. Because I can give you a bill, but it doesn't say it's a wellness visit. Um, I would like to ask before we even get into this for this year, if someone could prepare a form. I, I can prepare any form you want, but a form that would satisfy you as award commissioners that could be, the, the staff member could take to the doctor, take to the dentist, take to the eye doctor that says, Melinda Ross, I was here for a wellness visit. Sign it by the physician, submit it in. There you go. Well, I, I satisfied that requirement. So I'd like you to consider that as well. We need that.
Oh, yeah. Have some good points there, Melinda, and, and the, if the clinic is not something that the employees want, we should not be continuing. But you can see, we trimmed the clinic from a hundred and sixty thousand to sixty-five thousand. And that was the, that was for a number of reasons. But we cut out some of the things that were required and that's what cut the bill.
And it's on the survey too. So you'll, you'll know, you'll, you will know for sure who values that current account, how they rank it as far as value chain.
Yes.
Just FYI, um, you're saying I was here for a wellness visit. That's good. You can only say, Melinda Ross, that I was seen by me on this date, Dr. Duggan. They're not allowed to know why they went to the doctor.
Okay, so how do we handle that then? Cause that's-
It's something that we'll have to discuss and, I mean, this is, we're getting into-
I mean, before you start making out, you know, all kinds of, so you-
It's a HIPAA thing.
That's a HIPAA violation. You can't ask them why you went to the doctor. You can ask for a slip that you were at the doctor, but not why.
Oh, I can, an explanation would be better. That should provide that.
But what we're asking them now is to either, there's, there's several things that they can do to get their HSA. And one is to have an eye exam. One is to have a, uh, go to the dentist. I mean, there are all kinds of wellness programs. Uh, go have a flu shot.
But if, if Dr. Norman signs it, you know that they were there at the eye, but he's not going to sign that you were here for an eye appointment. You know what I mean?
Right.
That's-
A lot of them are just bringing in their bills and putting in their, uh-
I mean, if they want to disclose it, that's fine. But I don't, the physician's not going to sign why he was treating you.
That's why they bring in their bills to us and we put them in their personnel file.
Yeah. So I can bring in a bill, but it doesn't have to say it was a wellness visit.
I, we've never said, I, I said you either had to have like an eye doctor's, you know, an eye exam or a flu shot. There's several, um, that can be done. And I think I asked Cecily there, there was-
No, I asked you last week and you said you were being make sure-
I said you couldn't use your blood work from your doctor. You had to have it from there.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Power.
Hi. And if you allow me to speak today, I'm here as your Carroll County Preparables Coordinator. I want to dispel some myths and learn more about what the preparables does. Um, I don't, I've never spoken with these commissioners before, but I write-
Well, we're a mean bunch, so.
I know you are. I work with your wife. So anyway.
She's a lot meaner, yeah.
I write the mass, uh, plan for a, uh, prophylaxis disaster, which means a medical disaster. And you ask, why is my physician's preparables different than Mr. Fincher's physician's unit name directly? Well, I write the plans for a medical disaster and whether it be natural or man-made, he writes his plans for his disasters as floods, tornadoes, um, earthquakes, as we, we all know, we're on the fault line now.